Call the July 7, 2020 Finance Meeting to order at 6:45. Consideration of Claims. Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the claims.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $1,403,818.06, excuse me, manual checks in the amount of $52,306.70, payroll and liabilities in the amount of $441,976.59, for a total of $1,898,101.35.
Second.
Thank you. Any amendments or discussion of the claims?
I have none.
I have none, Your Honor.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there anything additional that the committee needs to review or discuss?
Your Honor, I just wanted to mention that part of the reason for the large dollar amount on the claims is that we are paying our first pay up to High Country Construction for the final phase of the Riverton Water Supply Project. And that first pay up was $943,754 and some change. So that's the bulk of the volume that you're seeing in this, in the finance room.
Go ahead, Kyle.
That was in the budget though, right?
Absolutely.
Kyle says yes, so it must be true.
More importantly, Mia says yes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Is there anything else that we need to discuss?
We have nothing, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. In that case, meeting adjourned at 6:48.
I now call the July 7, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Councilwoman Borders will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilman Larson will give us the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to meet as a group of concerned citizens to better the city of Riverton. We would ask for thy guidance that we might do thy bidding, that we might make Riverton a better place. Father, we're thankful for the safety that thou has provided, that we live under, the freedom that thou has blessed us with. Thankful for the Fourth of July, and we say this humbly, name thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Corey Roder.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here. The chair would enter, whoa, I declare that there is a quorum present. Chair would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to include two open container permit applications before item nine.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Schatz and a second by Councilman Larson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passes. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding any item that is scheduled for a public hearing will be given the opportunity to speak during that public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on other items may speak now. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium, identify yourself for the records. Please.
Thank you.
This old woman appreciates it. Okay, my name is Beverly Frank, and I live up in, on Park, on Hunter Circle. And what I'm asking for today is if the council would reconsider the fireworks that went on. It was like a war zone. It was sort of like a free-for-all. And, you know, it went till where I live, you know, I had to drive three hours. I got in the car at nine o'clock to get out of that noise. My dogs were going, my dog was crazy. So I thought, well, just take a ride. So I took a ride to Pavilion really slow. Well, they're blowing it out there too. And so I thought, okay. So I rolled the windows up and kept driving and then headed back here. And it was eleven, quarter to twelve, and it was still going on. And so I thought, well, I'll go to Hudson. And I drove slowly to Hudson and came back. And then that was about 12 o'clock and it sort of died down. But the thing is, it started the day before. And then it went, when I talked to some people, they said it went until two in the morning. And what I'm asking for is not to have, if you're going to have fireworks, have the city put it on for the people. You know, I was, that's, I'm so glad people are actually celebrating our liberty. Someone probably don't know what it is yet, but, you know, but, you know, I understand that. But I also understand there's those of us that older and we have pets and it's, it's, my dog didn't even want to go out this morning to go to the bathroom because somebody was having roofing done and it was in nails. He thought, oh my God, they're coming with guns. So I'm asking if we could do something different instead of just everybody doing their own thing. Because they were throwing the fireworks in the street when I was going through, down the street. They were throwing fireworks in the street where we're driving. Some people just, I'm not saying all people, but some people don't know how to handle fireworks. And so some people are going to pay for that. And that's what I'm asking for. And if you decide to go ahead and let everybody do what they do, then what are you going to do for us people that don't want it? That's, you know, we're people too. So that's what I have to say. It was horrible. It was the worst I've ever seen it. I mean, I think you let it last year. I think that, you know, you proved it last year. And it wasn't that bad. But boy, this year. And yeah, they can go up on, you know, the hill. Oh, what's that hill?
Griffy.
Yeah. And let them, that's out of the city limits, but it's not in my backyard. It's not all over the place. And so that's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
I'm sister Tina Gerard. I'm kind of the same way. You know, I'm all for like celebrate the Fourth of July. My backyard though.
Excuse me, could you give us your name, please?
Tina Gerard.
Okay, thank you.
Same thing with my dogs. And like I say, if you guys are going to vote on something, maybe a way, you know, let us know so we can also vote. Some of us don't do Facebook. I'm one of them. I don't Twitter, I don't Facebook. Email, something, if we could sign up for an email when votes are going on in town, for other things also. That way we can be a part of it. But like I say, I've got next door neighbors that were going off with cannons, but no light in the sky. I mean, they're just there for noise. So I would like to, to back her up and ask you all to reconsider also. Because it's not just pets, it's elderly, people have babies, you know, vets. I don't, I don't know how it came to be that it was, if there were studies done on how it would affect everyone. But, so I'd like you to reconsider also, please.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
I have some handouts for you. It was a little more formal. I don't know, who do I? Hey, I'm Betty Faden, and my complaint is a little more formal than what they were saying. It's also about fireworks. As a 34-year resident of Riverton, I would like to address a property right issue and a safety issue that has directly impacted me and my husband. On the Fourth of July this year, someone in our neighborhood set off a barrage of aerial fireworks. I also live on Park Avenue. The cinders and debris fell in our front yard, on our trees, our flowers, our shrubs, and our roof. They also fell on other houses and yards in their path. My husband and I were subject to the storm of balls of fire landing on our roofs until nearly 11:30 PM. It was terrifying. We were afraid our home would catch on fire. This fear was not unreasonable considering there was at least 16 fires caused by fireworks in Riverton that night. This is mostly my complaint. When I called 9911, the dispatcher told me there's nothing the police could do. Fireworks are legal in the city of Riverton. Excuse me. This is simply not true. There are things the police could have done, and the city council needs to better inform the public about steps citizens can take to ensure that the city does not condone damage to private property. The Riverton Municipal Code provisions that allows for fireworks is an exception to the noise ordinance. The Ordinance Code, Section 8, states, "When related to other sounds from what other sources, the term 'noise' means any sound which exceeds 88 decibels." Fireworks produce a sound output of 150 to 175 decimal range, according to Nathan Williams, Doctor of Audiology at Boystown Hospital in Boystown, Nebraska. The firework exception does not supersede the code provisions. All other city codes apply. Put another way, the noise exception does not allow anyone to avoid other legal requirements that the city put in place to allow for an orderly society. One code provision that applies is that an individual who sets off fireworks cannot litter my property. Municipal Code, Section 9, states, "A person is guilty of littering if he or she places, throws, scatters, or deposits garbage, debris, refuse, rubbish, or waste material, objects, and substances that cause any of the foregoing to be done upon the property of another." Accordingly, while someone can be exempt from noise requirements and set off firework, the code does not authorize the person to litter on our property. Also, the firework exception rules, exception, requires that individuals who set off fireworks clean up the associated mess because of the cause by the fireworks. However, the code does not require them to clean up my property. This is an example of some of the garbage and fire items that were in my yard on Sunday morning. See, some of them are very charred. Also, Section 9 talks about people defacing our property, walls and roofs, as well as trees, flowers, and shrubs. It is unlawful defacement of my property. We need to be, we need not be subjected to our property being damaged by somebody else's fireworks. Moreover, the code per se disallows the use of fireworks that cause a nuisance. The Riverton Municipal Code, Section 8, defines a nuisance to include an individual using a premise in a matter that is detrimental to the property of others. Allowing someone to set a barrage of fiery embers on our house and yard is a nuisance to us and damaging to our property. Finally, the Wyoming Constitution prohibits Riverton from enforcing its fireworks noise ordinance exception in a manner that denies us the due process. First, we cannot be denied full lawful use of our property without due process of the law. Wyoming Constitution, Section 006. Second, Riverton's apparent, absolute arbitrary power over our property by ignoring all other sections of the code by allowing a noise exception for fireworks exists nowhere in a republic, not even in the largest majority. Wyoming Constitution, Section 007. Consequently, even if my opinion is unpopular, Riverton cannot set our property rights above in a favor of a noise ordinance exception that results in unlawful damage to our property and is a nuisance. On a personal note, I don't have a problem with fireworks in general. However, when neighbors' actions go too far and our property and safety are at risk, Riverton and the police of Riverton should turn to other provisions of the law and take action to protect its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name's Henry DeClerc. I'm the fire chief here in Riverton. I just wanted to kind of give you guys a report, a rundown of where we're at for, not only for the year, but for this last weekend. So I made a couple of notes here. Just a quick reminder, the Riverton Fire District covers 175 square miles of land. So not only the city of Riverton, but about 10 miles each direction out of town. And we have four pieces of apparatus. Three of them are designed specifically for brush fires, grass fires. And one of them's, they call it like a wildland urban interface engine so we can use it for structure protection or grass fires. And then, so just with those in mind, we had 20 of our volunteers staff the station from noon till after our last call on the Fifth of July. It started at noon on the Fourth and we were there until about two o'clock in the morning on the Fifth of July. So that's 14 or 16 hours that those guys spent away from their families. Sent to the station, waiting on the calls to come in, which somehow didn't start until about eight o'clock that night. So between eight and two, we ran 16 calls for service. While there was only technically one of them that was in the city limits of Riverton, there's another three or four that people would consider in town just because they're in the, you know, the area that gets sketchy between city and county limits. That one in town is probably going to be the most costly financially, though. That involved a firework that burnt up the site of an eight-plex apartment building. So I don't know the cost on that. That's for the insurance companies, everyone to figure out, but that's going to be the most costly. Our largest incident involved about five acres of land out north of town. Luckily, just all sage and grasslands. And then we did have another incident out west of town that did include the total loss of an outbuilding. It was a storage shed. So everything in there, the structure, all of it was gone. Throughout the night, most often we were on multiple calls at a time. I counted the most, we had five incidents at one point in time going. So if you remember, we have four pieces of apparatus to brush fires. The numbers start not adding up very well for, for us. We did pull one of our structural engines out and use it, which just about caught us because it was right when that fire up at the apartment building happened. And it was committed to an incident just on the outskirts of town by the cemetery. So it was a just busy night for the men of the fire department. And I just wanted to kind of let you guys know where we're at. I was going to mention, we've had 153 calls year to date, so about 10% of our calls were in six hours at a time. So, and then I did want to thank Chief Murphy and his RPD officers, especially dispatchers Brandon Burkover and Valerie Hinkle that night for keeping up not only with us, but with RPD's calls for service. I know there are numerous, so that is everything I've got for that. Any questions?
I'd just like to thank you for everything you do.
Well, we appreciate it.
It's a big sacrifice not to be able to be with your families and it's appreciated.
My wife will tell you that as well.
We do appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, June 16, 2020, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, June 30, 2020, special council meeting. Approval of the minutes, July 7, 2020, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for July 7, 2020, and two open container permit applications submitted by the landing. The first for a street dance on South Third Street from Main Street to the alley on July 11, 2020, from 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM. And the second for an LGBT pride event on South Third Street from Main Street to the alley on July 24, 2020, from 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM.
Thank you. Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
The Finance Committee met earlier this evening and agreed to pay consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $1,403,818.06, manual checks in the amount of $52,306.70, payroll and liabilities in the amount of $441,976.59, for a total of $1,898,101.35.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Schatz and a second by Councilman. Have a motion by Councilwoman Schotza and a second by Councilwoman Bailey. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Consideration of open container permits. Would the city clerk please read the open container permit applications by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. The first application was received by George of Davis with the Women's Republican Committee for a forum at J.C. Park on July tenth, two thousand twenty, from four-thirty P.M. to nine P.M. And the second was from Lynn Hawk for a street dance on South Broadway in front of Barton from July seventeen, on July seventeenth, two thousand twenty, from four P.M. to one A.M.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the open container permit applications as presented.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Larson and a second by Councilwoman Schotza. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Leasing agreement with Air Resource Specialties Community Development Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. If you will pardon a short delay, we were going to contact Ms. Cara Kessler with the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality so she can answer any potential questions that you might have. I believe Megan's dialing her now. I was, I thought Mike's phone was going off. I was going to try to quiet him down.
Air Quality, this is Cara.
Hello, can you hear us? This is Mayor Guard.
Yes, hi, how are you?
We're good. How are you tonight?
Good.
We're working on a resolution for your
ground lease.
Your ground monitoring air quality unit. Would you like to talk to us about that?
Sure. So.
Cara.
Can I introduce myself real quick? Yeah, I'm Cara Kessler, and I'm with the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality, Air Quality Division. So this is for a mon, an ambient air monitoring shelter, so we're monitoring the air quality we'd like to monitor in Riverton. It's part of our mobile program, so the, the trailer is, oh, sorry. You want me to keep going, or do you have questions?
Well, you know, I don't, I don't know. Let me ask Eric Carr. He's the director of that division. Let him, we'll let him jump in. Eric?
Sure.
Cara, my apologies. We had a few technical issues there. I'm going to give my staff report now, and then council will likely act on them, on the item, and at that point, if they have any questions, we'll, we'll buzz you in.
Okay.
So in early June, staff was contacted by air quality specialists, a consultant hired by the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality, their air quality division specifically. The consultant inquired about the possibility of temporarily placing a sixteen, or an eight-by-sixteen-foot mobile air quality monitoring trailer adjacent to Veterans Park. We expressed some concern over the proposed location and suggested using a portion of an eight-acre parcel that the city of Riverton owns just west of the Cliffview Mobile Home Park. We have a very large retention pond down there, and it's part of our drainage facility. It'd be a good spot. It's out of the way, and it's fenced. We met with representatives from air quality specialists on-site, and they determined that it did meet their criteria for placement, which was mainly availability of electrical power. It was very close to a transformer, so that worked out really well. The lease agreement before you this evening for consideration is drafted from a standard lease agreement that we use on our airport properties. And at this time, staff recommends approval of the ground lease agreement between the city of Riverton and air quality specialists. If you have any questions, I can answer questions, or Cara is on the line with the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the lease agreement with Air Resource Specialist INC. to temporarily place an air quality monitoring trailer on Riverton, on the city property at two-two-two-one Diamond Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Larson and a second by Councilwoman Schotza. Any further discussion? Kyle.
Could you tell us what you're monitoring and what the purpose is for the program?
Sure. So the, the program is monitoring air quality, so we're monitoring different pollutants. We have particulate matter, PM-ten, which is like wind-blown dust, and PM-two-point-five, which is more like wildfire smoke. We've got ozone, nitrogen dioxide, and CO, which is carbon monoxide. So those are all combustion byproducts. And then we've also got sulfur dioxide in there and hydrocarbons. And then we also have a camera for visibility purposes and meteorological parameters. So those will all be available online for the public to be able to see at any time during the day. They refresh hourly. So the public can tell what the air quality is there. Now, the, the purpose of the program, you know, we like to move these around about once a year, get some data. So for Riverton specifically, you know, the air quality division has never monitored the air quality in Riverton. But Riverton does, it's what's called a micropolitain statistical area. So there are quite a few people there for that to be an unmonitored area, so we wanted to come there and monitor ourselves. You know, Riverton also has some sensitive populations, like a lot of young folks, elderly minorities, or low income, which is another thing that EPA and the air quality division look at when it's important to be able to monitor the air quality near those underserved folks. So they have more information to make their judgments about their, their health, so.
So essentially, you're doing a background study test. You're developing the data, and then you will utilize that at some point in time to look back or forward and say, this is the baseline for our premise.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so we'll do a year of baseline. Now, if we do find an issue at that point, we may choose to investigate that further and keep it out there longer. But you're exactly right. It'll kind of be a baseline to understand what the air looks like in Riverton right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Board appointments for the Wind River Visitors Council, Mayor's report. I've been contacted by Kathy Klein, who's in the audience, and Kathy sits on our Wind River Visitors Council and has been quite helpful and quite active at that as long as, and also she sits on the fast board, and she works up at Job Corps, and I don't know what you do with your spare time. Any idea what you've been doing with your spare time?
Eat the dogs.
And she, and that's another thing. She's actually working on the dog park on the, on the Riverwalk. So Kathy is a lot of help to us, and I would recommend her for the, for this appointment. The Chair would entertain a motion to appoint Kathy Klein to the Wind River Visitors Council.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion, and Councilwoman Hancock has the second. Any further discussion?
Missed out that she's also on the Riverton Hospital District Board, too.
Can you be on too many things? It appears you can't.
Been spoke very much in favor of what we were talking about with the Wind River Visitors Council budget just recently, too, so.
And Kathy, if you would like to address us on that subject, that was quite a detailed letter that you sent me, so.
Well, thank you to all of you guys, and thank you for the diligence at the meeting. When we did discuss the budget, I appreciated that we got some commitments from the Visitors Council that they didn't make just to me, but they made to you guys. Not in terms of if more money becomes available later, but the other is making sure, or at least increasing, the share of exposure that Riverton gets. The council, five years ago, assigned me to the board the first time. In that period of time, I've been really honored to serve Riverton. My husband and I, when we first moved here, fell in love with Riverton. We think it's got some incredible assets worth talking about. The town, the city, really came together on eclipse planning. Really came together this last year on Google Day. And I can't tell you how proud I am, how cool it was to see a community just come out and come together on those sorts of things. So I am really honored to serve on this committee, and while I'm not always as effective as I'd like to be, I sure hope you'll let me continue to serve.
Thanks, Kathy. Thanks, Kathy. We do appreciate you. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Glad to have you back. Thank you. Once again, we have a tree board, and I've been working to staff that. The tree board's been down a few members. And Dr. Spencer Smith has been willing to accept that appointment. And it would be my, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve Dr. Spencer Smith to the Riverton Tree Board.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hancock and a second by Councilwoman Bailey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Public hearing consideration of fireworks permit application, Riverton Rendezvous Committee. City Clerks report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor and council, before you tonight for your consideration is a fireworks permit application from the Riverton Rendezvous Committee for their fortieth annual rendezvous balloon rally at Valley View on July nineteenth, two thousand twenty, from ten to ten forty-five P.M. The conditions of the permit application have been completed. The proper fees have been paid. A letter of recommendation from the Fire Chief has been received. Proper notice to the public has been advertised. And included in your packet is a map where the fireworks will be displayed. In addition, a representative from the Rendezvous Committee is present tonight, should you have any questions. Based on the information provided through the application process, staff recommends approval of the fireworks permit application as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain, would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Schotza has the motion, and Councilman Hancock has the second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. I declare a public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Henry.
Nice meeting you. You know, every time I come here, I come up like three or four times and talk to you guys. You're going to stop asking and let me get in. Just so you guys are up to date, and I'm sure everyone is, the county enacted a fire ban starting today until further notice. If you read the fine print in that, it said all fireworks were to be banned. I did reach out to the county fire warden Craig Haslam and spoke with Mr. Tolstead earlier today about that, and they have granted an exception for that show for the city of Riverton. And that's something that I'm still going to endorse and keep on with for you guys. We will provide coverage that night, so everything should be just fine. But I just want you guys to be aware of all the, all the facts there, so.
Thanks, Henry.
Yep, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Glad he did that. I was just going to ask that. I was like, I just read about the fire ban.
Is there any others that wish to speak? Seeing none, Kathy.
Kathy Klein again. So those fireworks land right in my yard, and I love them.
There being no others to speak, the Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Hancock and a second by Councilwoman Larson. Discussion.
I think that was Councilwoman Rhoda.
Oh, excuse me, Councilwoman Rhoda. There's all those fireworks in my ears. I can't hear. Any further discussion?
I think, Your Honor, just as long as it's not on park.
Now, I would like to take a moment and to not treat those that came tonight as if we weren't listening.
Oh, no.
I, I had to field a number of questions on fireworks myself, and I understand the, the problem. I don't know exactly how to regulate every incidence inside the city. And once we, once we allow that to happen, our police force is only so large. And even if they pull up on the situation, it's extremely difficult to do anything about it. Who's got the matches? Who's got the fireworks? We have a whole industry that waits all year long to supply a product that is intended for a celebration. And I, for one, as most of us in this room, like Kathy just said, was, is excited and, and pleased with the opportunity, the freedom that we're given to express ourselves for that one day. It is not kind to leave debris in people's yards and to misuse property. I had another lady call that I called and left two messages. Megan was kind enough to pass her through. And she also felt like her house was receiving you know, undue unwanted refuge from neighbors just two doors down. And I think this is probably something that we need to speak to in a work session or something of that nature. It's difficult where it comes to us right here in, in front of what some of the people in the audience were asking for was an organized city display paid for by the city and organized and, and the Riverton Police Department. I was in Lander, and Lander's Fire Department was bent and going every direction, and so were their policemen. I know our policemen were, and, and you know, I, I don't know, our, our firemen are volunteers. That's just the only way to say that. They don't receive a lot of compensation for what they do. There's a little donation to their retirement fund, but you got to get way down the road to get that retirement fund. And so I suppose our police are a little bit different because they're on duty that day. They draw the short straw. And they're used to that. I can't say enough about our, our police forces countywide, Lander, Riverton, Shoshone, they all do a wonderful job. So I do think it's important to celebrate the Fourth. I think it's the birthday of our nation. I think it's something that we do a really, really poor job in educating our youth of, of what the sacrifice was and has been over a period of time. Men and women gave their lives, so we have the opportunity to stand on our curbs and shoot fireworks. And I can't tell you how important that is, and later in, in our discussion tonight, I, I hope to, to speak to that. But I don't want the citizenry to think that I'm not caring about their dilemma. I have a really, really good friend of mine that called me up and said, don't pass the fireworks ordinance. He has dogs, and, and he would like for those dogs not to be disturbed. You know, somewhere in here is, we lose track of, we just can't. You know, somewhere in here is, though we lose track of, we just can't control everything around us, that we have to give some freedoms to those around us to choose to do what they choose to do, as long as it's lawful. And we can always write another code that reamps the last code. And so I would take my moment here to speak in favor of these fireworks. I think they're, the balloon rally has become a big part. It's our fortieth anniversary. Mr. Carr and his wife have spent a lot of time in the, in the balloon committee, have spent a huge amount of time raising money. Some of us have gone out and, and done our very best to assist that program, and maybe one of the problems is that we are, we have been in this coronavirus dilemma, and people are looking for places to find relief, and I apologize for their excesses. People should, should think and, and use clarity better. Councilman Larson.
Your Honor, in researching that coronavirus, that the ladies that spoke said two things very interesting. One, last year was different. Also, New Year's Eve was different. You'll remember, we had no one here, and in the paper, it was stating that they were worried about an increase of sales of firecrackers of 50%. Well, when the final total came in, there was an increase of 250%, and they were afraid of running out. I don't understand that, but Park Street is a real unique area in the west part of town. Also in that area is Tonkin Stadium. And possibly, we could have a work session. Somehow, we could utilize that area for that specific West Park and stop the, you know, we could maybe localize the, the firecracker wastage in a specific area versus on private property, we could, and then we could figure out some way to clean it up. I mean, just, you know, I'm just trying to, maybe we could have a future work session on it. Thank you.
I was just gonna say, actually, as a part of, when we talked about this, one of the things I discussed and specifically thought we needed to add, and we did, was if you discharge fireworks in the city of Riverton, you're responsible for the cleanup and the removal of all debris. So, I mean, that's what's supposed to be there already. People are supposed to be doing it. I, I wouldn't think we need to go and give them a citation or something to get people to do something that's just being neighborly, especially if you're doing it in your neighborhood, which is what I think most people are doing.
Your Honor.
Yes.
In defense of that, the July 5th morning, I went running at 6:30 in the morning, and I ran all over town just to, just to look, to see for debris, and I found very little to none in most places. People did clean up after themselves. Of course, there was some that you can't see in the dark, but I'm sure they went out there and picked them up. But I'm telling you, when I ran through town the past few days, there have been no debris that I could find, maybe on people's property in their backyard, but in my opinion, that it's the price we're gonna pay. I would, I wouldn't mind picking up my fireworks in my backyard from somebody that had a good time, so that's what about being a neighbor is, is helping each other out. We can't get into someone's backyard. Or like my neighbors, they just put their grandson over the fence, and then I pick him back up over the other.
Got the ball goes over the fence, just lift the grandson up.
That's what they do. Then I just put him back over. But in my opinion, Your Honor.
I, I appreciate those opinions. Anybody else want in? I, I do hold those, and those veterans that suffer from post-stress syndrome, I understand their dilemmas, and so maybe we could schedule a, a conversation that dealt with this a little bit deeper. The one thing that I would like to point out is that most laws are written for law-abiding people, and there is always gonna be those that break the law. That's why we have a police chief with us tonight, and so we can't address every, every one of those situations, and, and I think for the opportunity to, for our own freedom to express that freedom openly and with, with pride in what we do, I think is an important thing. And so I would, I would stand in support of this fireworks opportunity for the 24th. With that said, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The chair would entertain a motion to approve fireworks permit application for the Riverton Rendezvous Balloon Rally.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion, and Councilman Bailey has the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Consideration for ordinance number 20-002, third and final reading, rezone of 207 South Sixth Street East. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance number 20-002 by, by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 20-002 on third and final reading, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, designated the rezone of Lot 6, Block 27, original town of Riverton, addressed as 207 South Sixth East to the city of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming, from commercial C1 to residential R2.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 20-002 on third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Schatz has the motion, and Councilman Bailey has the second. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the city clerk please conduct roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Yes.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Aye.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Yes.
Councilman Corey Rhoda.
Aye.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Motion passes. Consideration of ordinance number 20-003, third and final reading, a rezone of 605 East Washington. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number 20-003 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 20-003 on third and final reading, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, designating the rezone of Lot 5, Block 27, original town of Riverton, addressed as 605 East Washington Avenue to the city of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming, from commercial C1 to residential R2.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 20-003 on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion, and Councilwoman Schatz has the second. Further discussion?
Just to clarify, this is third reading.
Excuse me, did I say?
Second.
It's written second, and you're correct. I was reading what's on the page. I appreciate that. We're at third. So once again, the chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number zero, or 20-3, 20-33, excuse me, motion 20-003 on third reading. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And we'll hold the original motions, if those are okay?
That's fine, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion, and Councilwoman Schatz, are you okay with your second?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please conduct roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember Corey Rhoda.
Aye.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Aye.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Yes. Motion passes. Bid award for refuge truck. Public Works Directors report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. As part of the planning for the fiscal year 21 budget, the city council approved and authorized the purchase of a new refuse truck for sanitation operations. After approval of the budget, city staff prepared bid documents for this refuse truck. It was advertised, or began advertising, on June 12th with a bid opening on July 1st. One vendor submitted a proposal, it was Peterbilt of Wyoming, for a total bid of $302,999. This falls within the budget that was approved, and staff has reviewed the submittal form to ensure that it meets specifications, which it does. Therefore, city staff recommends the council award this project to Peterbilt of Wyoming. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to award the purchase of one 2021 Peterbilt New Way Refuge Truck from Peterbilt of Wyoming in the amount of $302,999.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Larson has the motion, Councilwoman Schatz has the second. Further discussion? Kyle.
You know, $302,000 is a lot of money, but one operator operates that truck. When I was back in New York, they had one operator and four people and one following, and they were putting in the garbage, picking up the, manually putting it into the hopper and doing this. I can't imagine what that would increase the, the number of employees in the city of Riverton, and yeah, it's a lot of money, but holy cow, it is an effective way to collect garbage.
We do appreciate all the equipment that we have, and, and I would speak also in support of this. Does seem like a lot of money, but we do pick up a lot of trash. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Bid award for sanitation operation trucks. Public Works Directors report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This bid, as you mentioned, goes towards a sanitation operations vehicle. We coupled this bid with a parks operations vehicle. However, at this time, we will only ask the council consider the sanitation award. We do have a bid price hold for these prices for 90 days, so we will be bringing back the parks operations vehicle at a later date. Bids were advertised at the same period as the sanitation refuse truck that we just discussed, June 12th, and opening on July 1st. Two bidders submitted proposals. The first was Fremont Chevrolet Buick GMC with a unit price of $28,554 for a total bid of $57,108, and Fremont Motors of Lander with a unit price of $26,933 for a total bid of However, the bid from Fremont Motors Lander was considered non-responsive to bid specifications. It was non-responsive in multiple areas, the most important of which was that it did not acknowledge the necessary addendum in the bid process, and because it did not acknowledge the addendum, it was determined non-responsive. The other items that were non-responsive was the engine size and then also the upfitting package. It did not meet what was put into the specifications. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that city council award Fremont Chevrolet Buick GMC this project in the amount of $57,108. And again, at this moment, we're only seeking approval for the sanitation operations vehicle. There is sufficient funds in the budget to cover this project award. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to award the purchase of one 2021 Chevy half-ton work truck in the amount of $28,554 from Fremont Chevy Buick GMC of Riverton, Wyoming.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion. Councilwoman Schatz has the second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Bid award, airport painting equipment. Public Works Directors report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The state of Wyoming is assisting all the airports across the state of Wyoming with the marking requirements that we have to comply with in order to meet the Part 139 operating certificate that we hold. The state does assist Riverton Regional Airport every four years in a marking project. However, previously, they also assisted us in a refreshing project, a paint refreshing project. Due to some of the budget constraints the state is facing, they can no longer participate in that program, meaning our airfield painting and striping will only be painted every four years. This is not sufficient to meet our requirements with the FAA and does not comply with safety standards. Therefore, the state of Wyoming is assisting airports to purchase their own paint equipment to then provide the refreshing every two years on their own. The state of Wyoming performed this bid, and at this time, you only need to provide concurrence to the bid because the award will happen through the state of Wyoming. City staff and JAVIATION helped prepare the bid specifications for this paint equipment and provided it to YDOT. We also participated in the advertising period and also the award. Bids were publicly opened at 10:00 AM on July 1st with the following results, as represented in your packet, Sherman Williams Company, with a total bid of $28,595. This is within the budget that was approved in fiscal year 21, and again, will allow city staff to provide its own painting services moving forward during those off alternating years for refreshing the airfield marking. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to provide written concurrence to the state, or to the Wyoming Department of Transportation, YDOT, bid award to Sherman Williams Company in the amount of $28,595 for the Riverton Regional Airport marking equipment project.
So moved.
Councilman Larson has the motion, and Councilman Rhoda has the second. Further discussion? Mike?
So this is gonna be a spray painting unit and paint, or is this just the?
Equipment only.
Equipment to apply the paint.
Your Honor, Councilman, this is equipment only. We have included the paint in our operations budget for fiscal year 21.
Then I, to follow up, I, I'm assuming that we can't use existing city painting equipment that we have to operate in the airport? We have to keep them separate?
Your Honor, what the city has for painting equipment wouldn't be adequate for the airfield. We wouldn't be able to cover the area necessary. What we have for the streets crew is a simple walk behind unit that we can use with stencils. It wouldn't adequately cover the area required for the airfield.
Kyle?
Kyle, is that the one that we use to mark walkways in front of the schools?
Your Honor, the, the paint equipment in the streets department is what we use to mark the schools area, the school areas.
Yeah, that's, I wouldn't do it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Consideration of Resolution Number 1416 Coronavirus Relief Grant Application. City Administrators report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Happy to give Mr. Butterfield a break for a minute before his encore. What we have before you tonight with Resolution 1416 and ultimately 1417 that Mr. Butterfield will get to with regard to air service is the method the state is using to distribute funding from the federal government to the tune of 1.25 billion, excuse me, billion dollars. In order to do that, they put together a process through the SLIB board, and that is what these applications are. They're coronavirus relief grants or CRG grants. These, these, these items have a certain set of rules to them. These, um, these, these items have a certain set of rules to them. And we have reviewed the rules and we have decided to separate the two applications this evening, I won't go through the second one right now, as it goes to air service. We decided to put all of the other applications within the same exact grant. This allows us to apply for these right now in order to be in on the first round of funding. We had anticipated an August date, but it came to our attention that there may be an mid-July date as a special meeting. At this point, at the point in this meeting, we don't know that that's for absolute sure, but if we didn't have this into you now, as opposed to approving it before July 23rd, which was the original plan, we fear that we might not be able to make that first round. While there's more than likely enough money to go around, you usually don't want to be running second on these items because you don't know what's coming in front of you. As such, in this, in this application, we've already, we've already completed the application, we've already had it signed and sent in to SLIB. The reason we do that is in order to give us a placeholder. If for some reason council did not approve the resolution this evening, we would, of course, withdraw that. But it does get our, get us in, then at the end of the evening, if you approve this, we will submit the resolution this evening, so then we have that place. And we were told then you will be, we will be considered at the next available session. The cost that you have before you're broken into essentially two, two categories. One application is the current cost. These are items that have already been accrued. We can account for them or estimate them. They include the sick leave that is granted under the FF-CRA, personnel costs for hours reported, as we have been tracking a lot of this, personnel costs for weekly leadership team meetings, that's an estimate and is denoted as such, and extended PPE and disinfecting costs. That app, that application portion totals $47,269 and change. The additional items that are proposed or future costs are items that we are asking for. They have not been purchased at this time. The, in our discussions with SLIB staff, it is our understanding that as long as those funds are expended within this calendar year, so by December 30th, I believe it's December 30th is, or 31st, the, then we can actually apply for that. And as such, we looked at some of the needs that we have moving, not only to respond now, but to move forward. So we have items such as disinfecting stations, PPE and disinfecting supplies, an electrostatic disinfectant sprayer. These are units that allow us to sanitize large areas in a short amount of time. Why? Because if we walk out here, you can notice we have a lot of space. You'll notice that our other buildings have a lot of open space. We want to try to do that as efficiently as we can. So, putting in two of those as a request is, was recommended. Additionally, we have IT solutions built in that allow us to, if an individual has to quarantine for any reason, whether it be exposure, they can work from home. The good news is, we have some of that now. We are asking for more to up our ability to do that. That way, if those situations arise and we have to deal with them, then we can do that. Other items include a SharePoint server and license. This allows us further capabilities to collaborate from distance and without, without adding additional interactions that weren't necessary. So very, it's a, it's a nice IT portion. And ultimately, addition, and additionally with IT, we are talking about video arraignment for our municipal court. As you've seen from the weekly reports, our caseload is significant. Our municipal court does a great deal of work with a great deal of individuals. And as such, anything we can do to start eliminating that, if you look over there, we've already added certain items that help to address that, that risk. If we can allow not the arraignments to continue uninterrupted and reduce the number of people in the building, then we reduce the probability of infection. So, that moving forward does, and it does allow us a great deal of flexibility for that, for that department. And in addition to that, what we looked at in working with the police department is the addition of three patrol vehicles and a transport vehicle outfitted specifically to deal with potential COVID cases. Why? We want to be able to separate individuals who may, may be exposed and also to better protect our officers and our personnel in those cases. So, with that, staff did a great job of working, putting it together and estimate in very short order because, as I pointed out, we had planned on a July 23rd discussion and submittal and now it's a little earlier than that, so we had to fast track that a little bit. But ultimately, the idea would be to purchase three vehicles. Why three? One for each shift. And then we would have those applied to each shift. And then the transport vehicle would not replace our existing one, but would augment those capabilities and allow us to better separate individuals, transport individuals, and give us a little bit more flexibility. Additionally, those resources are very, very useful to us on an ongoing basis, keeping in mind that we would not be taking the patrol cars and only using them in a COVID case. They would still be patrol vehicles. They would just be allocated to those different shifts. With the, that, that amount totals $253,475 and change for a total of $300,745. Once submitted, this item will go to the SLIB staff and then to the Attorney General's Office for consider, for review. The reason for that, and it's important to denote, is if it's found that we accept money for something and spend it and it's not appropriately spent, or we shouldn't have ever bought X, Y, or Z, we have to pay that back. And we want to be very clear, we believe, we've reviewed this significantly, we believe that all of these are good costs. And we believe that their review process will further substantiate that. But we wanted to make sure that council has an understanding of that, but we do not expect there to be a problem. Your Honor, with that, I have no additional, nothing else to add, but I would, we, staff would recommend approval as presented. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please read Resolution Number 1416 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Resolution Number 1416, a resolution authorizing submission of a coronavirus relief grant application to the State Loan and Investment Board on behalf of the governing body for the City of Riverton, Wyoming, for the purpose of repayment of COVID-related expenses within City of Riverton, as well as an application for proposed purchases by the City of Riverton, Wyoming in relation to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 1416.
So moved.
Councilman Larson has the motion and Councilwoman Borders has the second. Further discussion? I've been in a lot of rooms in the last 90 days trying to spend this hundred and 1.25 billion dollars and I have yet to see a successful dollar spent, so I don't think we need to worry too much, but I do appreciate the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Consideration of Resolution Number 1417 Coronavirus Relief Grant Application, Air Service Support, Public Works Directors' report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. As Mr. Toll said so eloquently explained, we're also seeking funds through the CARES Act to support air service. As you know, our air service requires a minimum revenue guarantee. The minimum revenue guarantee is obviously impacted by the amount of passengers that utilize the air service. Because of the national decline and our local decline in passengers, we also saw a correlation to the minimum revenue guarantee payment that is required of our committed, our communities. Staff worked with YDOT to establish an estimate of what that impact would be and you see a table in your packet that illustrates that. The table demonstrates a non-COVID guarantee and a COVID guarantee. The local difference in that is just under $298,000. We are therefore asking or submitting a grant request to SLIB to help offset that impact of COVID-19 on air service. This does not relieve the community of a match requirement, however, it helps us to maintain high levels of commercial air service with additional funds received through the CARES Act. We therefore recommend that you pass Resolution 1417 in support of this grant application. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please read Resolution Number 1417 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Resolution Number 1417, a resolution authorizing submission of a coronavirus relief grant application to the State Loan and Investment Board on behalf of the governing body for the City of Riverton, Wyoming, for the purpose of responding to the adverse effect of COVID-19 on the transportation industry and relieving additional costs absorbed by the local communities for commercial air service that connects Fremont County to the national transportation network.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 1417.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Hancock has the motion and Councilwoman Borders has the second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Council Committee reports. Councilman Bailey, would you start us off?
Sure. Again, it seems like a long time since we've met, but I guess it wasn't. Just had a quick noon meeting, so. Again, I was pleased to be able to go up to Duvois and enjoy the parade and the rodeo over the 4th of July and came back into town late, about 11:30, something like that. Again, saw the fireworks going off, so it was, it was a pretty impressive sight. Again, to sort of reflect on what we've been talking about with fireworks, again, I think a lot of this comes down to personal responsibility. I, I think we need to give people the opportunity to celebrate with fireworks and that kind of stuff, but we also have huge personal responsibility and again, to cleaning up our own mess, making sure we're being safe, making sure we're not imposing on our neighbors and that kind of stuff. So I think, again, I, I hope we all just be responsible and do what, what's right and, again, help each other clean up the mess and, and all of that kind of stuff. And so, again, it was nice to see a good turnout and people getting out and, you know, participating in events and all that kind of stuff. And I think Lander had a good turnout for their little pirate parade, whatever they called it. And, so, looking forward to the, again, the happy days here this coming Saturday. It's going to be in Riverton from 4:00 to 8:00 and then a concert from 8:00 to 11:00 or 12:00, I can't remember. And so again, I think, again, we can go out and show that we can be responsible and celebrate and have a good time and, and, you know, keep these kind of events going and show that people can be responsible enough to participate safely and have fun and take care of other people. And, and then of course, we've got the rendezvous stuff coming the next week with the balloons and all that great stuff. We've got a great turnout. It's, it's amazing how we can, we can draw people, 30 balloons, I think, is what Eric told me. So, it's going to be quite a sight. That's, it's really a fun thing to watch and to participate in, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Tim?
Um, I've been going to the Happy Days meetings and that's been a lot of fun because we sit there and I think when we had the first ones, we had so many vendors and then that number just keeps increasing with people that are interested in being involved. People just kind of bring up, oh, maybe we should get ahold of this person, maybe we should get ahold of this person, and then just, it, it blows up from there. At this point, they're still trying to squeeze everybody in. You would think that's a lot of space, but when you have a lot of people trying to use it, it's trying to get people squeezed in there, so.
Good problem to have.
It is a good problem to have, yes. I was just, I had somebody reach out to me that was willing to come, he wanted to come and play on the sidewalk there and he reached out to me and I reached out to the gal that's setting up all the vendors and she's like, well, I'm not sure where to put him, but we'll, we'll find a space somewhere, so. But, I mean, for people that aren't aware of it, it's July 11th, it's this weekend, it's 4:00 to 8:00, lot of different things going on. There's quite a few booths that are doing kids activities, there's going to be a scavenger hunt that's going to, you're going to basically go to one table, they're going to kind of set whoever wants to do it, I don't think you have to be a kid, I mean, if you want to be involved in a scavenger hunt, go for it. Uh, they're going to give you kind of clues and then as you go, it will involve going to maybe some of the other vendors, that sort of thing, so. Of course, we're going to have food trucks, there's going to be a chalk the walk. I think that's going to be over near Kussel's, kind of along the sidewalk there, cornhole tournament, like legit tournament, I think there's going to be a prize, as I understand it.
Rules?
Yes, and rules.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, that's kind of crazy, isn't it? Cornhole with rules. You know, it's funny how cornhole's taken off. When I was a kid, cornhole was like the, you know, game that nobody wanted to play at the, am I the only one that had that experience? You'd go to some fair and there was like this poor cornhole person there that, you know, maybe a kid would come and throw every once in a while, now it's just like turned into this big thing.
I thought it was a new thing.
You thought it, oh, well, see, you're.
I'm way behind the times.
A little, yeah, a little bit behind there, but, and when I was a kid, that was like, oh, yeah, cornhole, whatever, who wants to do that? But now it's like this thing, that, I think a fun thing that they're going to do is a .5K couch potato race, that's going to be fun. I was trying to say, you ought to make it so that point before the five is really, really, really small, so nobody can really see it. So they might think you had a .5 you did, or a 5K you did. So anyway, it's going to be a lot of fun, that's this weekend. And I just encourage everybody to come. It's going to be great. There's a lot of street dances, too. I mean, we talked about the applications for those last week, so. I had a chance, I didn't have a chance to attend the Solutions Committee meeting, actually the regular one, I was sick, which was not fun, it was apparently pretty well attended and interesting. A lot of people that have been talking about just the way that the Rails to Trails is being used and folks out there hooping in their yard or making loud noises, drinking, just completely not being good neighbors, I suppose, not using the space in a way that we'd want to encourage people to use, the Rails to Trails. We've been talking about a couple of different ideas for that, we're still working on it, I guess, hopefully, we can come up with some things that can help out. One of the things that we've been discussing and that ties into the Happy Days is that there is an individual, what's his name again?
David Huell.
David Huell, thank you. I knew you'd be there for me, Corey. Who's trying to set up a neighborhood watch for Fremont County and particularly wanting to get people involved in it in Riverton. Not the kind of thing where we're expecting people to go and confront folks that are out there, but more so just observing, letting the police know about it, letting them know what they've observed, that sort of thing. He is going to have a booth at the Happy Days, so he will have more information there in terms of what they're looking for, what it's all about. So I would encourage you, if you're interested in that at all, check out the booth at the Happy Days. So, other than that, I was going to mention this last meeting and I wasn't here because I was sick. And it wasn't coronavirus, okay? It was just a sinus infection. But I, Eagles Hope has been in need of donations. They're trying to take over and, and in addition to what they've already been doing, trying to start doing Phase 1, which is basically taking over the Good Samaritan Homeless Shelter. And so, part of what they're needing are just a lot of different donations, things like towels, dishes, that sort of thing. And, so I'd encourage you to get on their Facebook page, they have, it's kind of set up like you might have for gifts for a couple for a reception, how you can kind of have a gift, not, what do you call it, a gift registry, that's what I was looking for. And so you can go on there and you can kind of just see what they need and, and pay for it right there and get it there. So, I'd encourage you to do that for Eagles Hope, encourage you to go to Happy Days and while you're there, check out this neighborhood watch that we're trying to get figured out here in Riverton. I think that's everything.
Thank you. Carla?
Well, it's hard to follow up, Mike and, and Tim. They pretty much took all my stuff.
I'm sorry. You actually were at that meeting.
That's fine, I, I was at the meeting.
Go back over it.
I'll let, I'll let Corey expand on that a little bit. I know they're having a community meeting on the 15th. I'm not sure the time and place, so I'll let Corey do that. But, other than that, that's about all I really have. I just really want to encourage everybody to enjoy everything Riverton has to offer, especially this month. There's lots of cool stuff going on, lots of people have worked really hard to make it happen and I'd like to see everybody, the whole town out there if we can. That's about all I've got.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Yes, Your Honor. All I really have to talk about is rendezvous games that are not this weekend, but the next weekend. So if you have a group of people So if you have a group of people that want to participate, get your registration forms into the city. Since we have both the Chiefs here, the Fire Department and the Police Department, I'm thinking we need to see a competition between the Police Department and the Fire Department. I think there's a lot of people that'd be curious to see who's the, who's the champion. So. But the community is, we want to know. Darn it. Jake, Jake Blumshine's not about it, or? Oh, darn him. All right. Well, keep on trying. We still got some time.
You know, you know that about fifty percent of the Fire Department already is either Sheriff's Office or RPD.
It's your choice.
It'd be like doing an arm wrestling match with yourself.
That's okay. Especially when the tug of war comes along, that'd be fun to watch. But other than that, Your Honor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Kyle?
Don't want to beat a dead horse, but fire, July fourth and July started off. I only spent three hundred and fifty dollars on firecrackers. And so we, we lit them off up at my daughter's house on Sunburst Estates. And our practice is, we have two five gallon buckets. And we fill those after they've cooled down. And, and the adults there, including the oldest one there, monitor the youth because that's the only way they're gonna learn how to do something correctly. And when you've got kids from nineteen down to five years old, you've got to monitor what they're doing. And I assume that there must be some adults other than me and Riverton that would do that. And we pick up because I don't want to leave my son-in-law's driveway looking like a minefield. But, so, you know, that's how you model and teach people how to do things. The second thing is, I, I am sorry for that lady on, on West Park. I really am. I feel for her. We were picking up bottle rockets all over our front yard next to Tim's sign and, and I couldn't, you know.
Were shooting at Tim's sign?
I don't know who or what, but we just picked them up and put them in the garbage. And, and I understand her frustration and I feel for her. I've got an old Mastiff that was in our closet because of the firecracker. Okay? So I know about dogs and I know about veterans and all of that. And but, you know, there's just certain ways of celebrating the Fourth of July and one of them is firecrackers. Sorry, that's the way it is. The second thing I wanted to mention was on the eleventh, the VFW Ladies Auxiliary is having a rummage sale at six eleven East Main Street. They're gonna sell everything they can get their hands on. And the residue is gonna go to Eagles Hope. Okay? So if we don't sell it, it's going up there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. We appreciate it. Corey?
Okay. Well, Mayor, most people have talked about the things I want to discuss. I do want to go back a little bit on the Neighborhood Watch program. What happened is we had a joint committee meeting with the Solutions and the Community Engagement Committee. And we kind of discussed what it would entail, what it would look like, what are the next steps. So from there, we kind of created a subcommittee, I guess you would call it. And we had another meeting where we sat down with David Huell and I believe it was Ron Woodward that supplied the list for essentially a checklist on what you would do in a Neighborhood Watch. Again, like Tim said, they don't want you chasing people down. You are not the knights of the night. But you, you would just look out for your neighbors and keeping an eye out for them. So I would encourage everybody, go see David Huell on the eleventh. He'll have a pamphlet that kind of goes over these things and the general layout and how it works. They're looking for one captain who would kind of oversee their area. They would work directly with the chief, who's been present at the meetings as well. So it, it's looking like it's gonna be a really great thing to bring to the community. So I encourage everybody, if you can't be there on the fifteenth, which will be, I believe we decided here at City Hall, is that correct?
Subcommittee, no, oh, in the back, yes.
Yes. So that'll be again, on the fifteenth. If you can't make it, you can get information at the Happy Days, which I encourage you to go to. Make sure you stop by and see David Huell. So also, the Fremont County School District Recreation Board is going to be looking for a new member here pretty soon. So if you know anybody who might be interested in something like that, we are gonna need a citizen volunteer. Is that correct, Tim? They have just a citizen?
Right. We're looking for a board member who is from the community because they have certain ones from City Council.
And the school board that are appointed, correct.
Because Mr. Watson.
Was appointed to the board.
Board.
So now we need a, a community citizen who would want to sit on that board. Again, like everybody else said, there are a ton of events coming up. From the street dance on the eleventh, you have the rendezvous games, the balloon rally, which is gonna be all weekend, the sixteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth? Seventeenth, eighteen, nineteenth. I'm terrible with numbers, I'm sorry. So I just, I encourage everybody to go out and enjoy these things. One thing I did want to talk about, since we're doing a lot of talking about taking care of our neighbors, I made it out to the Pavilion Fireworks this year. And if you've never gone to those, the Pavilion Fire Department puts those on and they generally hold a dinner or an auction or something of that sort to raise funds. This year, they weren't able to do that, but they still put on a heck of a show. It was an amazing fireworks show. So i- if there's anything you can think of, of how we can help those guys out, because they are our neighbors, I'm sure the chief can tell you that they, they've probably worked together on things. So I'd, I'd encourage people to look to the Pavilion Fire Department, see how we can help them as well. I think that is all that I have at the moment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Corey. Kyle?
Corey forgot one, one last thing on that Neighborhood Watch. The reason for the Neighborhood Watch is not to, but it reduces a number of events. I mean, it's statistically rewarding to do it. It actually helps. It's not a beat your chest. It's a, it's a factual reduction in crime. And, and it's not a confrontation. It's a report and more eyes on a subject gets that subject resolved quicker and easier.
And I think it's important to know something about this too. When we were discussing it as a part of the committee, we do not, this isn't something that the Police Department is gonna take over. This is not something that the committee is gonna take over. The purpose of the committee was supporting Mr. Huell. Huell. Oh, I got it that time. Good. Mr. Huell and what he's trying to do. So this is really an opportunity as a, really a grassroots community members getting together and saying, we want to do something to make sure that we can keep our streets safe. So I, I want to stress that. This is not something that the city or the Police Department is intending to go in and take over. Because government doesn't always do things as effectively or as well as citizens do. So I, I just want to make sure that's clear. Don't just, if, if you think this is a good idea, don't just sit there and say, I'm glad somebody's doing it. No, roll up your sleeves and go help. That's the point.
Mayor, just to add, I believe he's already got it off the ground and running in Hudson, but he also has a Facebook page. Fremont County Take Our Streets Back. And you can get updates and follow everything that's going on there as well.
Thank you. Tony?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a handful of items. Most of them have been covered. We do have a force meeting on Monday. It's eleven AM here at City Hall. There will be an Airport Board meeting, not this Friday, but next Friday. That'll be at City Hall at eight AM. I would, we would point out to add to Councilwoman Schatz's point on the rendezvous games, they can sign up here at City Hall. We're hap, we'll be pushing out more, more of that on our Facebook page. Many things to make in and everybody who works on that, they've done a great job. I would, with, at the present time, we do not have any items for you for the work session coming up. While I believe the conversation on fireworks is, is a good idea at some point in the future, we would kind of ask for the opportunity to wait a little bit of time and then, and let us get a little bit of information on some other options for you as opposed to running it at this point. Without, if there's no objection, we won't have a work session at the upcoming meeting in a week, if that's okay with you.
All right.
And.
That's okay with all of us.
Outstanding, thank you. And the last thing I did, I did want to express some sincere appreciation, having, we've worked on a couple grants this week. We put forward a lot of money, some big asks. The amount of work that goes into those is significant and the entire team that you see around you is, is responsible for that. All the information that you have to gather and the different documents and the amount of tracking, you know, you see forty seven thousand dollars. What you don't see is the three months of tracking every expense in the HR department that Krista does or the research on the different items. And it's very much appreciated. So we're very hopeful for that, but I'd like to say thank you to everybody who did so much good work on it. Thank you. Your Honor, I have nothing else.
Thanks, Tony. I had the great opportunity that most of you aren't gonna be able to get until after Labor Day, but FTAG was invited to go to Dubois and tour the new National Military Museum there. And I'm here to tell you that that is worth whatever the price of admission is gonna be to, to take part of that. And, and with that, Dan Starks, the gentleman that is the funder of that and the owner of the facilities, was the one that gave us the tour. And a wise, wise man and very smart. And he kept pointing out to us, is the reason that he is, put all of this effort in was to educate the, the people to, to the history that lies in, in front of us. And so often, the, the statements that are made are very much not educated and, and people don't understand the, the cost of what our freedom really has cost us. And it's eleven thousand square feet on one side of the curtain and another eleven thousand square feet on the other side. He's only put together the, the World War One to World War Two side of it and the Korea and Vietnam section is, is still to come. And one of the things that you don't understand about this is that when it comes time to collect all those items, you can't buy those current pieces of equipment. You have to wait till they're old enough that they go on the lot for sale. But there's some unbelievable pieces of equipment there. He has the original musket that shot the first round of the Revolutionary War. And it's documented, the gentleman that shot that musket got court martialed the next day because he shot before they could see the whites of their eyes. Little different than a court martial today. He, he still stayed in the Army and received a, received a commission and, and went on to be a captain. And his family has kept that musket in their family until just recently, when that came up for an auction and they sold that. But if you get a chance to go see that, just the inspiring words that are on the outside gathering area around the flags is enough to bring you to tears. And so I would encourage all of us to go, go and, and do that. And and Mr. Starks, what a wonderful thing you have, you have brought to Fremont County. I appreciate your effort. For those of us that did attend the Enhancement and the Solutions Committee meetings, there's a lot of things that happened there. And we want to encourage, and I, I gave this idea to the Enhancement Committee months ago. And they've done a really good job working with it. And it's, it's not so much to stop crime. And, and what we had in that meeting was a great example of it. We had, what, probably five or six citizens that came to express a, a current problem that they were having. And the chief doesn't sit on things very long. If he knows where the smoke is, he'll go put out the fire. And so almost immediately, I would have to say, the chief got engaged and, and went and, and made positive action for those people that came and explained what they needed. He went out and fixed that. And so this Neighborhood Committee is for us to help watch each other's property. We have thirty, thirty-five members of our police force to work ten, eleven thousand people, community. And they're, they're busy. And they just, they really just need a lot of help. And this Neighborhood Watch is an opportunity for us to stop passing the buck and laying it off on our police force for not doing a good job and getting engaged ourselves and trying to assist and, and help that, that operation. And I'm here to tell you that once you bring that information to our police, they'll do their very best to get their hands around it, as the chief did. Within twenty-four hours, there were improvements in that situation. I appreciate that, Chief. I really do. And sometimes, Chief has to go into those meetings with his bulletproof vest on because people don't know how hard he works. And he takes a lot of arrows that shouldn't be intended for, for that situation. And so I just, I just think we are, in this time of our, our nation, for us to be critical of the police departments in our areas and, and fire departments, I was in Lander for the, the fireworks and the, and the police and the fire departments were going back and forth like they were in a Chinese fire drill. And they were doing the job and they were, they were doing a good job. And we do appreciate them. And sixteen hours is a really long time to be out there fighting fires. And, and yet, how, and, and we need, we need to work on that. We need to try to educate people to be, to be more responsible with their choices and how they do things. And even the other side of that, if, if you have dogs and if you don't like fireworks, you would be wise to load up and go up to Louis Lake and, and go do something that there is no bangs and explosions. And so I think we can all work and, and find a spot that we could compromise and, and help each other on that. We are fortunate enough to, and, and I think this is largely to Councilman Bailey's efforts. I believe we have body cameras for all of our police force now.
Your Honor, that's correct. We got them out this week.
Yeah. And I, I think Councilman Bailey has gone out of his way to help show how, whether he could fund that and how that could get to those officers. And you know, I, I think this is more of a protection for our officers than you really think. And when they can playback the, the conversations that were given them, it will be embarrassing for many of us. And so I would encourage you to be kind to those officers as they pull you over. And if you do, you will be the recipient of that same effort. They also, this is kind of maybe a Wyoming thing and off the edge, but we also got some new AR-15s this last week to replace twenty-year-old AR-15s that have been shot so much that the riflings are not good in those guns. And so we got thirteen ARs.
Yes, sir.
And we're, we're gonna get a few more before we're done, but it was nice to see those come in and they'll assign those to the officers and they'll have to take care of those. And, and I appreciate that, that effort too. We got, we got a report back from the Wyoming Crime Lab that our, our rifles were a little bit used, didn't we? They sent us back pictures that showed the riflings of the bullets and, and there were no riflings. And so they sent us a picture of a good rifling and a, a bad rifling. And so, they sent us a picture of a good rifling and a bad rifling. So I appreciate that effort. I do also wanna thank all of the council and the staff for the noon meeting on the 30th, I appreciated that effort and more so, I just don't think we give enough credit to city staff to take care of as large a budget as we do and to be so close on the numbers year in and year out. And that starts with Mia, I've been in the rooms where she can control all of the staff pretty good, and she does a wonderful job with it, and that goes right through Tony, who is concerned with the money that's spent in staff and in the departments on a daily basis. And then we have department heads that are outstanding and they work hand in hand and when there is a problem, there has been a problem, every once in a while Kyle breaks a piece of equipment that he shouldn't have broke and everybody comes to his assistance and we have a good city staff and we should be really proud of the fact of how closely they monitor the money that is given to them and I appreciate them. We also, as that Engagement and Solutions Committee meeting made some real headway, Leslie Spoonhunter was in the room.
Shakespeare.
Shakespeare, thank you, I had that wrong, Leslie Shakespeare. And we have been trying and trying, we've been able to get into the Rapochee Tribal Council, but we hadn't been able to get into the Eastern Shoshone Tribal Council and I just mentioned that to Leslie and within hours, we had a meeting, didn't we? And Tony and I went over last Thursday and we spent two and a half hours with those individuals and there is room to work on both sides of those equations and we need to embrace that and do our very best. I would like to publicly thank them for setting up the man camp out at the Rapochee School for the coronavirus transience and they're working hard to help us there. I mentioned earlier about the Lander fireworks, I was amazed at how many fireworks were shot. I sat on Bella Vista and watched the valley explode for forty-five minutes and I do understand the complaints that people are having. It was a lot of fireworks and there was a guy just twenty feet from us holding Roman candles in his hand firing them off and I don't know what you do with that, I mean that's, you know, freedom comes at a cost, I think, and sometimes we just have to let that rain. And so, I do appreciate all the efforts that were expended. I did get three calls about fireworks and I answered all three of those and I was glad to get them. I think the people that called me were grateful for the return calls. Now to the fun stuff, Legion game tomorrow night at five o'clock and seven o'clock up at the Legion Stadium. Working hard on prairie dogs, we're gonna try to find a way to take prairie dogs out of Riverton if at all possible. And Tony has just put in the application to once again move the game and fish off of getting their deer under control. And so, we appreciate all of those efforts. I appreciate those people that were willing and able to help us on the tree board and look forward to putting a couple more people on in the next meeting or so.
Your Honor, if you need test grounds for prairie dog annihilation, I volunteer for that.
Actually, I had a conversation with Weed and Pest today and you have nineteen lots that we'd like to, first, we'd just like you to take your prairie dogs and take them someplace else.
Me too.
But if you're not gonna do that, we're gonna see if we can help you with that, so. There is, we have prairie dogs that we would like to eliminate down on 16th Street, we have them at Eighth and West and we have them up at the middle school that we would like to eliminate. And we're checking in on the...
Is there a renner Badger available? We had, we had a Badger come through two years ago and just about killed them all.
Killed them all. A Badger is not a thing to play with, and so I would suppose if we could rent one, maybe that's not a bad idea. They do have a poisoning process that if we use that process, the real problem is we gotta stand guard on the dead carcasses and dispose of those correctly so other dogs and cats and things don't get them.
So we don't kill the dogs.
And so that's, and then they have a carbon monoxide system that costs a little bit more to administer, and then they have some bombs that you put down the holes and they're gonna get back to us on those costs. Eric has been, Eric Carr's been the instigator of getting me the locations and those three are the locations that we'd like to work on and we're gonna do that. Tony has numbers, we have run surveillance for the Wyoming Game and Fish inside Riverton, we have sightings of over five hundred and...
We have five hundred and thirty-five sightings, our permit is applied for at fifty, so...
And we hope that the Game and Fish, it's been kind of a runabout, try to see how long we could last and stay with the process, but we hope that we're getting close to the end of that, to where we can accomplish that, try to move some of those out of the city of Riverton and those inlying areas. I do appreciate all the comments, if anybody has anything else, the staff, have anything to add?
We have nothing, Your Honor.
Megan, you gotta, wanna straighten anybody out? Council, you have anything? If there's no objections, we stand adjourned at eight forty-seven.